Okay, it's a little bit early, but I think everybody's here. So I'm going to call the Planning Commission meeting of October 24th to order. And we will start with roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Sayoc?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Taussford?
Here.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Here.
And Chair Jensen?
Here.
And Commissioner Bourgeois has an excused absence.
And will you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from our last meeting. And I know two commissioners were not present for that meeting, but have you... Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes? And are there any comments or questions, Commissioner Taussford?
I'll just make the motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was a date.
October 10th.
Thanks, October 10th.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Smith. Any questions or comments? Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. The next item is written communications. We have, I don't know whether to call it two or three. We have one desk item on each of the matters on our agenda tonight. One on item number one, which is 41 North Santa Cruz Theater. We have a staff report and a letter from Ms. Lee Quintana. And we have a staff report on item number two, Riviera Terrace. We did get those electronically earlier today. Has everyone had a chance to look at them? And if not, just give me a high sign or... Okay. We have. We do not have any requested continuances tonight. And now is the time that the commission members who serve on other committees give us a report on that. Each commissioner also serves on subcommittees. They could be General Plan, they could be Historic Preservation, they could be Conceptual Development Advisory Committee. But we all also serve on additional committees. So, I know that we had a Historic Preservation Committee. Commissioner Erickson, is there a report on that?
We had a meeting this afternoon, several items of action. A house on Bachmann Avenue that was actually the Planning Commission sent back to have the Historic Preservation Committee provide some guidance on exterior materials and so forth. The applicant had wanted to make the whole house stucco. It was approved this afternoon with a stucco bottom and shingle, second story. And with an understanding that the colors will be decided after the project is constructed, with samples on the spot to address the concerns that have been expressed by the commission. There was some exterior modifications to a house at 327 University that were continued to the next meeting. And some exterior paint colors on building at 160 West Main, the old First National Bank Building, that's changing restaurant ownership. And that was also continued to the next meeting with some direction for paint colors. There's a request for some exterior modifications to a house at 134 Masola, which was approved. And a request to remove a house at 98 Central Court from the Historic Resources Inventory, which was also approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Erickson. I don't think that any other subcommittee met. Am I correct about that? Okay. Now is the time in our meeting when we ask people who are in the audience if you would like to talk to us for three minutes about something that is not on tonight's agenda. Now is your chance to do so. On tonight's agenda are the theater at 41 North Santa Cruz and Riviera Terrace, on for architecture and site evaluation and approval. If you'd like to speak to us about something other than what I've just mentioned, you may do so. Seeing no one. Let me... Before we start, let me just give you an idea of how we do things. There may be some interest in the audience about the Giants game. I'm happy to have you keep your electronic devices on so you could look at them, but if you'd please put them on silent, we would appreciate it because it can be distracting. The last I heard, it was 6-0 Giants. What we'll do is call each item. We'll ask the staff if there's anything to add to the reports that we have. The reports that we have are quite complete. Then if they don't have anything, or even if they do, I'll ask members of the commission if they have questions for staff. We may have none or several. Once those questions are completed, I'll ask the person or persons who are the representative of the applicant for a particular project to come forward. They and/or their team have a cumulative five minutes to talk to us about the project. Commissioners may have questions that they ask of the individual or the members of the team. Then we'll invite whoever else, aside from the applicant, wants to come and talk to us. Each one of those people will have three minutes. And then we'll ask the applicant if there's something that they want to address that's come up. And that will... They'll be allowed three minutes for that as well. Once that is done, the commission will then... We'll close the public hearing. The commission will have a discussion, which will hopefully lead to a motion. So that's how we'll do things tonight. And if you are going to speak, there are little cards that look like this in the benches in front of you. We would appreciate you filling it out so that, number one, if you want to speak, I can call your name and you know when to come up to the podium. And number two, more importantly, that we can have your name for our record because we do keep minutes of the meetings, especially if we're going to have further meetings on it. We want to be able to record accurately who has talked to us and what they've had to say. So with that, we are going to take up item number one, which is 41 North Santa Cruz Avenue, Architecture and Site Application S-12-023, which is the theater. And first, I'll look to the staff to see if there's anything to add to the staff reports that we have in front of us.
There is nothing to add.
Okay. Are there questions from commissioners to the staff regarding this project? Commissioner Taussford?
Hi there. Thank you. I have a... My question is about... I was curious as to why we didn't see story poles or at least some orange netting on the facade of this building?
We did not require story poles because there's not an actual addition proposed. The roof height is being modified, but there is not an actual addition to the building.
Well, and also, but what is being added are the wing backs that are diagonal, which is really what I'm concerned about. And it's very hard to... I mean, I have pretty good vision of what things look like, but it's pretty hard to see the actual bulk of something like that, so...
The project architect has prepared computer models. There's two of them posted on the wall. And we did attach three of them to the staff report, which showed the 3D.
And I'm aware of that. And like I said, I have pretty good vision, but I still don't think it gives you an accurate view of what this eventually will look like on the whole streetscape. It's not just about the building, but it's how it affects the streetscape as well. Thanks.
Other questions? I have a question that I asked actually earlier that I'm going to just put on the record. I spoke with Ms. Rooney and Ms. Avila this afternoon because my question was, why was this application, my term is bifurcated, between architectural modifications and renovation and the conditional use permit that I understand is coming forward on December 12th? I understand why the applicant wants it to go that way, but procedurally, I did not understand why the Planning Commission would consider it that way since, as I read the report, a consideration of the architectural changes would necessarily introduce a discussion of if architectural... The changes were approved would be a precursor to things that are being asked for in the conditional use permit. And it didn't seem to me... It seemed odd that we were not considering them together. So I was hoping that the staff could put their response to that on the record.
The applications were brought... This Architecture and Site Application was brought forth separately because it was complete and ready to be acted on, whereas the use permit was not at the time this was advertised and the staff report was repaired. The use permit has subsequently been completed and is ready to move forward. And it has been scheduled for December 12th. It's possible it will be moved up if an earlier meeting is available. The primary reason we put this on was that the applicant was interested in moving forward as quickly as possible. The theater use has shut down, and they would like to get started on the exterior improvements. And have a fairly aggressive scheduling planned and hopefully get the thing opened again in June of 2013. The Architecture and Site Application is allowed independent of the use permit. There is a valid use permit for the operation of the theater. So a use permit is not needed to allow that continued operation. There are currently two screens. The proposal is for two screens. They are proposing a reconfiguration of the floor area that could potentially be accomplished with just building permits. It is the exterior improvements that needed the discretionary approval. And staff felt it was appropriate to bring those forward separately.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for staff? Or are concerned about not consolidating the two applications? Commissioner Smith?
My concern isn't actually about not consolidating, but I know that this went before the Historic Preservation Committee because I sat on the committee at that time. And are those findings or... They weren't findings. Are the reports available?
We do have recorded minutes from all three meetings where this was discussed. The first time was informal and they did not... The committee did not take any action. When the committee reviewed plans in January, at that time, it was indicated that the project was supported and the committee made a motion to recommend approval of the plans at that time. However, a formal application had not yet been submitted, so we took it back a third time with the current plans, which had been modified based on input from the previous meeting. And so the committee took a formal action at the October 10th agenda. And so, yes, I do have recorded minutes from all three meetings.
Thank you. I just wanted to... Just to advise the commission that this had gone through some rigorous discussion at the Historic Preservation Meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I'm certainly aware of the work that the Historic Preservation Committee did on it. My concern is not with that. It's with the CUP, really, and what the architecture means for the use. Commissioner O'Donnell, did I see your hand go up or was I mistaken? Okay. That... I'm going to just... Let me follow up. I did have a... It reminded me when Commissioner Smith was speaking that I had another question, which is, part of our staff report indicates that the tile could come back to Historic Preservation as a, quote, "informal," unquote, request or matter. I don't know what that is. So would you explain to me what that is?
The committee wanted to see the details of the tile. The project architect gave them some description of what the intention was, and that is to design a tile that is appropriate for the Art Deco style. The tile that's currently on the building was put there in the '90s following the earthquake and the repairs had to be done. So it's not really Art Deco style tile. The committee asked to see the details of that, and they said it did not need to be on the agenda as a formal item. So it could come in the form of memorandum, such as we do with the Planning Commission, to show them the final design and ask if they have any concerns to please let staff know.
Commissioner Taussford?
Wanted to... Sorry. I was caught up in what you were saying. So for clarification here, though, the Historic Preservation Committee looks at the historical aspects of the previous building and compares it and makes sure that it's consistent with what they're seeing for today, correct? But as a planning commission, we do not only that, but don't we also look at scale, mass, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, the committee is looking at it in terms... Their primary concern was making sure that the Art Deco style was held to and that all of the improvements that were proposed are cohesive and appropriate for that style of architecture. And you are correct, the commission has a further discretion.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. I do have a card for Gary Colseth for item one. And so I know you've been here before, so if you're going to work with the pictures at the machine, if you'd take the microphone with you, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gary Colseth. I'm the architect for this wonderful ownership group, which is comprised of several local families who banded together and decided to save this theater. They not only want to save the theater, they want to reinvigorate it. They want to make it more interesting, not only architecturally, but to the street. And they also want to make it financially feasible and sustainable. Just a brief history. This building was originally built in 1915, 1916, as a theater with retail on the ground floor. And it had... The history is not 100% clear, but there was a major fire and it was rebuilt in the 1930s. And again, the style had changed a little bit. Again, in the late '40s, there was a major renovation or architectural change made to the building, which is pretty much how you see it now. However, in 1989, the earthquake damaged the building pretty good, and they needed earthquake retrofitting, as well as... That's when they put the second movie theater screen in there and got their CUP for that. They also made several changes to the outside, including walling in some of those windows and modifying the retail space. Basically, this building has been... Which is right here, the existing picture, picture of the existing building, is basically classified as an Art Deco style. We really did a lot of research into Art Deco and movie theaters in general, which is very popular styled with movie theaters. And it's... It's all over the map. You know, there's this really, really extravagant, ornate, detailed architectural facades. And then there are some plain ones. And we felt that since the building was really plain, from our standpoint, it was very basic, especially on the upper floor, that we shouldn't propose something too extreme, too radical. So we tried to strike a balance between something that was going to give us a little more excitement, a little more prominence, but not overdo it. And we worked quite a bit with the Historical Preservation Committee on this. And we feel that we struck a really good balance with this. It'll be a monochromatic building. The center section has been raised up about six feet, five feet, I think. Just a few feet, Jackie says. Okay. It's my watchdog here. But in essence, from the street, it's basically going to remain pretty much the same on the ground floor. The covered entry will be retained. The retail space on the left will now be mirrored with a new retail space on the right, giving a little more life to the sidewalk during the daytime and actually helping with the rent. The entry will be changed slightly. We're going to put a ticket booth right in the center. And we found pictures that showed kids lining up for a matinee screening, and the ticket booth is right in the middle. So we're trying to bring that back. The wainscoting will be heavily scrutinized, I'm sure, but we think we're going to find a really nice design and appropriate for the style. The marquee, we found that it's... When you're driving down the street, it's very difficult to see that, the sign, what the movies are playing or whatever. So we found that we needed to increase the visual presence of that. We did that by doing angular angled signage, and that covers the whole width of the building now. And so that provides a shelter. And then we can take off the canvas awnings that are now over the... On the left-hand side, the jewelry store. The balcony, we created a little balcony on top of this marquee, the overhang, for special events. It's not going to be used every day. It's just there because it's... It's there for the taking, and we felt that it would be a really nice feature to have once in a while. But you can't really see that balcony because it's hidden by the marquee. We maintained the knife plate, and we built up that facade a little bit in an Art Deco style with blocks to create that interest. Real quickly, I wanted to point out that for anybody... Any retailers who are concerned about disruption during the holiday season, we don't plan on doing anything on that facade until after the holidays are over. And we also want to point out that the owners have put up a website called LosCatisTheater.com. You should go look at it if you haven't looked at it already. They've got a blog, many visitors, and also they have a Facebook page with over 150 likes. So we really advertise this pretty well to the community. And we just... I just want to close by saying that we just want to revitalize this tired gem and make it the centerpiece of the town.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Colseth? Commissioner Taussford?
First of all, let me tell you, thank you for bringing this wonderful project and for the people who, I don't want to say came to the rescue, but at least have assured us that we will maintain our theater in town. I look forward to it. I'm an avid theater goer. That all being said, this is still a project, and we want it to be perfect, don't we? Because it's going to be a pretty large building now than it was before. It's going to stand out. And we want it to stand out in a good way. So, help me with this. So, we're on the same football team, and you've just hiked the ball to me, and I'm hoping to run with it over the goal and score seven, okay? So to do that, you have to help me along. So, I'm not a lighting expert, but when I looked at the proposed marquees and the changes in them, what I'm... And it really is going to present itself as the largest arrangement of lights on the street. Okay, so I'm a little concerned about that. And I wanted to know how or how you can help me see how that exterior will alter the ambient light that's presently on Santa Cruz Avenue. Boy, I can't see that very well. Do you have a copy?
I have... This is the copy that was in the newspaper. I could pass that around, or I could show it to you if you'd like.
That was in the newspaper?
Yes.
Yes, I haven't... Could I?
Here.
I mean, can anybody else? Is it just me? Okay, because this is not what we see in our staff report. You realize that, right? Oh, this is existing? Oh, I wanted to see the proposed.
Hey, Mr. Colseth, if you have a... Yeah, we do have that behind us. And we're... We're trying to figure out how the light... I think Commissioner Taussford's trying to ask you.
Right.
How will the light be... Come out on the street? And how will it change?
Right. I need to know if there'll be a change... An ambient light change. How will the light on three marquees that I see change what I'll see on the street?
If I may, I'd rather point you to that rendering back there because I think you'll see it better. And I'm going to put this existing one back on the screen here. So maybe we can compare the two. And first of all, I want to point out that this rendering was commissioned and done before we had our final HPC hearing. And that was one of the main things that they focused on was the lighting. They wanted us to reduce several areas of lighting, though, and we agreed to that. So this rendering is an artistic rendering, I have to say that. It's not 100% accurate because it was done previously. I'm going to have to ask you to use your imagination as a skilled Planning Commission member, which I know you are.
And by the way, I have a very good vision. So that's not to be questioned, but it's not just for me.
So, the... You can see there's quite a bit of lighting on the existing marquee. The Los Catis sign would be very similar to what our Los Catis sign would be, almost identical. We talked about rimming the outside with ball lights, and that was suggested by the HPC not to do that. We're fine with that, absolutely. It's not a big deal. We don't want to make this look like Broadway. It is Los Catis.
Thank you.
And that was very good advice we found from HPC.
So...
The... You can see on either side here, you've got those shapes that are lit with neon, and we want to maintain those. The signage for the movie theater, what movies are playing is up here. We're simply lowering that down to more eye level from vehicular and pedestrian eye level. We haven't identified exactly how those are going to be lit, but typically, they're backlit with letters. So you can see it in the daytime as well as nighttime. There might be a higher... Newer technology that will be able to show this both day and night and be able to be changing with computer control. The uplighting that you see, the... The uplighting that you see on the four pillars is really for dramatic effect. This might be for the opening gala. Those are not going to be permanent lights. Those might be, you know, temporary rented lights for that. And I don't think you're going to, you know, see the... But maybe, if we are permit allows for that. But mostly, the upper facade will be a lot less bright than it shows here. And I really apologize for not having the time... This is a very expensive watercolor that we did, and we didn't have the time to go... that we did, and we didn't have the time to go back and redo this. You can see that the building right now has ambient light on this, on this upper plain facade. The idea is to have very little uplighting from the balcony level to upwash the walls, and we're not going to just rim around the neon or LED, I'll call it neon for now, around all the shapes. Our new plan is, shows that, that we are not doing lighting anymore. We submitted a new plan right after the meeting two weeks ago, and we took off all the lighting on that.
Right, I think that is shown in A6. Is that correct?
Good, A6, do we have a revised A6, Suzanne?
Okay, Suzanne's not going to answer the questions. You just tell us what we should look at.
I'll put my glasses on. Okay, I believe that what you are seeing on A6 is the revised elevation. I only question that because when we submitted it, we weren't sure if it was going to get inserted or added to the back of the package.
Okay, why don't you look at A6 and tell us if that's what you think we should be looking at.
Well, that's, okay, view A6.
Thanks. Commissioner Tausfer?
I see a detail that's in a circle.
Yes.
Says neon lighting, if I, I can't read it, projection?
On the, on the, on the corbels, yes.
Right. So what I wanted to ask you.
This says 2/27. If it's an update, what should it be?
Yeah, that's true. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. If this is an, this date on here is 2/27/12. You have something more recent than that?
Do you have a date in the upper right-hand corner?
Eight, eight thirty twelve.
If you're going to, if you're going to speak to us, please tell us who you are, so you can get your name on your record and fill out a form.
She's not talking, she's just helping me, okay?
Okay.
We submitted revised elevations a week ago plus two days. So I don't know if you have those in your package or not. I would hope that you would.
So we'll ask staff later whether we have what we need. Other questions for Mr. Kohlstad?
Well, yes, I do. Can I continue the sliding, and then I'll get it over?
Okay.
Because I think it's important.
Kind of in order, I mean, if we've got a later document, we don't know if we have a later document.
Well.
It's going to be about a document, but we don't know we have, and we're going to deal with it later. Does that make any sense?
Yes and no, because what I want to avoid is what we had at our last meeting, which turned into a meeting among everyone in the room with everyone asking questions of everyone else. And I think it's rather more orderly if the person at the podium answers the questions, and then if we need to update that in another way. I would rather do it that way than have everybody answering questions all over the place and handing people pieces of paper that we don't have on our, properly recorded as our minutes. That's my only issue with that, because you were not at the last meeting, so you didn't see what happened.
Let me just, one, I have not seen the latest document, the document that the applicant told you is current. Is there some particular reason why you can't deal with the most current document instead of talking about a document?
If Mr. Kohlstad wants to find us the most recent document, he's welcome to do so.
I'll direct you to item number one, addendum.
Thank you.
And it's one page.
We had a little excitement here.
And it's page A6. It's the front elevation, and it's a separate addendum. And I would think that you would have all these.
You know what? It says here on the corner, it says October 18th. I mean, it says it, it's, oh, that's when it was received.
That's the one.
So this is updated.
That's the updated, that's the updated sheet.
All right.
So if you look, if you look at that detail, the circle detail.
Right.
It says neon lighting at projections.
Can you put this, do you have it? You could put it, and so everybody can see what we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay. I love this. This detail right here is, it's different than what's in the stapled package. The stapled package showed neon lighting at all of these steps. This one does not. So this is what we're proposing, is there's no lighting going on in this wall at all. All of these bands are not highlighted. None of these bands are highlighted in the vertical as well. We're only going to put a couple uplights that are on this overhang that'll accentuate all the stepping at nighttime.
Sure, I understand that.
In the daytime, it's monochromatic, and it's, the forms themselves create the shadows.
Right, I understand that. So in the circled area that shows the neon lighting, tell me, is that, are those, is it neon tubing that we're going to be able to see, or is that going to be hidden? It looks like there's bands of.
They are bands, and that's, that's the whole beauty of, that's why you do neon, to see the tubing. If you see the existing building.
So they're going to be neon, you think?
Or it could be LED, probably LED. Okay, there'll probably be LED tube-type strip lighting.
Okay, because that's a really different look than what's on the front of, so is the neon that's on the front of the marquee, will that remain?
Yes, on the same, the vertical ones, right here?
Yes.
Yes, those will remain, just like they are right now. And so we're mimicking that only in a horizontal fashion on the upper, they're similar shapes, but we're just mimicking it horizontally.
And you're mimicking those with LEDs instead of neon? Is that what I'm understanding?
I don't, I'm not sure if.
I asked, okay, the question was, will you be retaining the neon that's on those pediments that are on the corner of the marquee?
We will most likely redo everything on this building. And if the current technology points towards an LED solution versus a neon solution, then that, that's what we would go with, because LED is more sustainable, don't have the gas, and it'll be cheaper in the long run, energy-wise.
And it, it does give off a different light, doesn't it, than a neon? A little more dot, 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 or dash, dash. It's not even lighting, is my point.
Well, we would only do LED if it mimicked the neon.
Okay.
And I think that technology's going to get there, if it already hasn't.
Okay, so getting to that technology, just, I'm sorry, I'm not finished, but it's, I think lighting, lighting is everything on this building, and I don't want us to overlook anything. So, and, will, did you, did I hear you say that you would have dimmers installed to adjust this lighting? Because you won't know the impact of it until it gets put up there, and do you know what I mean? Do you think there'll be dimmers installed with this?
That's the great thing about LED lighting, is that you can dim it fairly easily, and we would certainly do that. We're going to want to be able to adjust it so it's not garish. It just, it just creates the effect that everyone wants to, wants to see.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
Right, well, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
And then I have another question, and you might think it's odd, but in today's current market, I noticed that you have, you know, obviously theaters always have posters, and you have window posters downstairs. But now that you're updating the lighting and everything, there's sometimes, what I've seen in theaters, is actual moving posters, moving LED posters. And so I'm wondering if you're going to continue the practice of paper posters to advertise your movies, or would there be some?
That's a great question. You're looking at the detail. We are planning on using LED TV screens for those. So you can change those quite easily without having the paper.
And will there be sound as well?
No, no sound.
So will those go off at night?
It depends on the time of night and the time of day. I would, I would imagine they would go off at 12 o'clock, midnight, 1:00, something like that.
With the theater, so we don't know.
With the theater, they would go off, when the theater lights go off, those would go off. But you'd see them in the daytime.
Okay, so at this point, you're not putting sound with the, because they're doing that as well today? They're putting LED in the windows with sound?
There's no plan for that right now.
Okay. All right, that's all for now.
Other questions? Commissioner Smith?
I have two easy questions, I hope. With the lighting, are you able to change the colors if you use the tubing?
With neon, you're not, but with LED, you are able to change, change the color.
And so.
And that could be very, very handy, and like, you could do a Christmas theme, you could do October, if the Giants are winning, you know, you could make it all orange. So you could do red, white, and blue, Fourth of July type of a thing, yes.
So that is in the plan, then, too?
The plan hopefully is that when we get, we can find LED lighting that mimics as best possible to the neon lighting.
All right. And then my second question, actually, is the retail space. The one on the right, as we face it, on the right, it looked like it was going to be slightly deeper than the one on the left. Is that correct? Do you just have some dimensions for, for that? I know the one on the left, I've been in the jewelry store, so I understand its dimensions. But you're taking up the whole what is now the booth, is that the ticket booth that's never used?
That's correct. There's a ticket booth in that space, and as well as a staircase that was put in there, I think in the '40s. And that will be moved, we're moving, we're making a much more grand, open staircase from the lobby. And so that whole space over on the right is perfect for another retail space. The space on the left is extremely small. We want to be able to have a bigger market and have a little bit bigger retail space on the right. It's still fairly small as far as Losgadis standards are concerned.
Correct, it is. And then I just have a follow-up question. So right behind it, looks like there's an office.
Yes.
And so is that office necessary for the theater? Or is this, did you project that that would be an office attached to the retail space?
We felt that we needed one office, that was for the theater, a break room, whatever, someplace to put a safe, things like that. So that, that would be essentially for the manager or something like that. We might have to actually add a bathroom for the retail space. Currently, the jeweler has to go into the theater, and that's an existing condition, which is accepted, but we're checking out the plumbing codes and the health codes that we might need to provide a bathroom for that retail space. So that would reduce the size of the retail space, or possibly reduce the size of the office space.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seack, did you have your hand up?
I did. I just wanted clarification on the, this neon lighting and projection. Is this the projection that's shooting up in the diagram that we have there?
No, it's not.
Okay.
No, it's not, at all.
Would it be projecting anywhere?
No, no, neon and LED lighting is not the kind of lighting that actually has a beam. It's more like a glow.
Okay, so is that just incorrect, or?
Those lights are not, those spotlights were there, again, for dramatic effect for this rendering, to show this is the opening night, possibly.
Right, and that is not a permanent fixture?
That is not a permanent fixture.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I took a look at the minutes of the Historic Preservation Meeting of October 10th, and you were asked a question about the lighting. You responded by saying the lighting will be LED as opposed to neon. When I listened to you this evening, it sounds like that's still an open question. Is it an open question?
We haven't nailed it down 100%, and that's why I'm saying tonight that we, I cannot speak with 100% certainty, we won't have to resort to neon.
Well, I'm just a little concerned. If you told the committee that it was something as opposed to something else, that sounds like you told the committee it was pinned down. So if you're changing your position, that causes me some concern. Secondly, you were asked a question, a light wash would create a shadowing effect and create the same time effect. The uplights could be a problem for the hillside residents. You said, this is not a quote, but a substance, the uplights are in effect shown, which is what you are saying tonight. I'm just, I'm very much in favor of this project. But some of the answers we're getting tonight indicates that you're not quite sure what you're doing. I don't mean that as derogatory. I mean, you're at the stage of the proceeding where you're trying to figure out a number of things. And I want to kind of get to the magnitude of what it is you don't know to determine what it is we're being asked to approve. So you don't know whether it's neon or LED, notwithstanding that that's what you told the Historic Preservation Committee? Is that right?
On the, on the strip lighting, yes. We, the intention is to get LED lighting. We haven't found it yet. Okay? So I'm sure we will find it. I don't know if that is going to be your make or break it for you tonight, but as of today, our research showed that we haven't found it yet, but we're not lighting experts.
Well.
But I'm not sure what your second question was, Commissioner O'Donnell. About the uplighting.
Both questions are simply what we are being asked to approve by way of lighting, and I understand your answer to be, we don't know yet. I'm just trying to ascertain whether that's the case, so that if we're being asked to approve something, we might approve something subject, however, later to our approval of your lighting, which seems to be unfortunate, because you'll get an approval, but you won't be able to put any lighting till you tell us what it is. Is that the case? You don't know what your lighting is going to be?
I honestly do not, no, 100%. The proposal is for LED. Let me, let me restate that, that the proposed lighting is LED lighting to look like neon lighting. We look at a lot of new products all the time. Sometimes they work, and sometimes they don't. So our proposal is for LED lighting. I was.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Erickson.
Thank you for your work on the project, Mr. Kohlstad. So, so that we can help, so you can maybe help us understand, and I take it face value your statement earlier, that you're not a lighting expert, but I'm going to ask you a lighting expert question. So, because you probably know more about it than I know. So if you have to, in your words, resort to neon, other than the differences, I understand, in energy consumption, which is not inconsequential, is an operating cost, but are there, are there lighting effect differences of any consequence between neon and LED that we would notice or that we need to be concerned about if you have to resort to neon? Because whether neon costs more than LED is not really our concern.
I don't think there will be any difference. I think the whole point of the LED replacement for neon is for it to look like neon. Thank you.
Before I go back to you, Commissioner Tausfer, I actually have a question, so it's sort of related, sort of not. In looking at, I know yours is different, but I haven't had a chance yet. Looking at the staff report, it's on page, basically, it's at the top of page five, and it's also contained in the proposed conditions, in condition number five are the recommendations of the Historic Preservation Committee. And among them is, quote, eliminate the neon parenthesis LED close paren tube lighting. And that's also, point A under proposed condition five, eliminate the neon lighting. So I'm confused, did you agree to the conditions of the Historic Preservation Committee? Are you proposing something new and different?
Commissioner Erickson was there, and Ms. Avila was there. This statement says eliminate the neon slash, or quote, LED parentheses tube lighting. I believe that they meant eliminate it on the facade, and let me, let me point this to you.
You can just remove the one from the podium. We knew that it works.
Okay. As I stated before in our, oh, I can take it out. The neon lighting that the HPC asked us to remove, this is my understanding, was all of the lighting that was here and here. It wasn't the LED lighting that went around the sign. It wasn't the LED lighting that was up on these corbels.
Okay, let me ask you a question about the remainder of the recommendation, which are. are bronze anodized finish on door frames, eliminate bulbs on the marquee, wall sconces to the middle tube blasters, uplighting. Do you agree with all of those recommendations?
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Tausfer.
Thank you. So getting back to the lighting, one area I didn't cover, and I know that this is not, we don't know if this, we haven't approved any of this yet, so this is a question before. But how, if, there is this outdoor area, patio area, I'm not even sure what to call it, lounge area, how will that be lit?
That won't be lit.
It won't be? So when you have, when you have your, are you only, you said you're only planning on using that for special events?
That's correct.
And so when you use that for special events, will that only be used during the day?
It'll probably be used in the nighttime as well.
Then how will you light that area?
It'll have enough ambient lighting from the building, from the uplighting on the upper part, from the two wall washes that we're using. You see the round windows?
Yes.
So we're going to wash that wall from the floor.
Okay, well, I didn't-
Floor lights in there.
That's not indicated at all, so I wouldn't know that, which is why I asked the question.
Okay.
And what are these other little pediments that are beside the window wall? Are those lights, or?
Right here?
Yes, yes.
Those are the wall sconces that we added to add a little more ambient lighting for the balcony. So that, so it's lighting the building, the pilaster, but it's also going to put a little bit of lighting into the balcony.
Okay, so I don't have a detail in front of me about that, so are you telling me that that entire pilaster, or whatever this lighting fixture is, will be glowing, it'll be like more of a glowing type of a pediment? Is that what you're saying?
The sconce?
Sconce?
No, that'll be a solid, and it was directed by the HPC pretty clearly to make those light fixtures solid, so they would just uplight and downlight and not cast out.
Okay.
That was very clear by them, and we totally agree with that.
Okay, that's what I, I wanted to know that as well. And so what about, oh, the flutes down below on your first floor? I see bands also around, are you lighting those pillars as well, at the top? And how are you lighting the pillars?
At these pillars right here?
Yes.
Those are, those will not be lit. Those are just relief pieces for detail for a capital.
So the round, so the bands at the top are just for relief?
Correct.
Okay. And I can't see this here, I'm assuming that these columns are much more Art Deco-y as far as, that they're wider in their channels than it looks like here, so that they're more Art Deco-y than doric or romanesque?
You might look behind you at that rendering, you can see that a little better.
I did see it there, but I wanted to be guaranteed it from you.
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, scallop flutes on that.
Okay, so this isn't quite the detail that we're, that might be there, is that what you're saying? They may look a little different?
Not, 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 not in any way noticeable, I don't believe. I think it's going to look a lot like this drawing.
Okay. And then, oh, and then you, just to assure me, around the marquees themselves, you plan on putting a, how do I say it, a wider frame around the marquees?
Are you meaning this frame that's around here?
Yes, that, the center one and the two side ones.
It does have a little band.
Right, will that be any thicker than that? It's a-
I believe it shows up better in the color rendering in your package.
Okay, I'll check that out again, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. I don't have any other cards on this item, but I see a lot of people, so come forward, hand in your card, tell me who, tell us who you are. And you have three minutes. Okay, sir, are you going to come forward or not? Okay. Anyone else? Because I'm going to close the public hearing if no one comes forward. Going once? Going twice? Okay. Really, I don't, I can't imagine that you can, if you were a team member of the applicant, I can't imagine that you would rebut your architect, so if you want to say something independent now, now's the time to do it. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Well, he sat down with no further questions. Do you want to ask Mr. Kohlstad a question?
You know what, I'm always waiting for you to say any other question.
I think I did. Okay, Mr. Kohlstad, you're being asked back up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, what can I do for you?
Okay, on the second floor, there's a concessions lounge, and I wondered if you could explain that, how that would be used.
Do you want to, do we want to talk about the interior? I'm happy to talk about the whole interior of the project if you want, but I-
Well, it's just, it's just the concessions, it says concessions and then slash lounge, and I just-
Commissioner Tausfer, before you do that, let me get a clarification of the staff. Are we only looking at things on the outside of the building that we're considering for architecture tonight, or are you also looking at things on the inside of the building?
We were looking at the exterior modifications as part of this application.
As part of, or the only part?
The only part.
Okay. You still want to ask?
Just one question.
Okay.
Were you, was there any plans to modify the existing landscaping at all? There's a tree out in front, and I was curious if the wing that would be diagonal would miss that tree or not?
Those are street trees, and so we can only trim those limit, with limited ability, but we think it's going to work. There is a tree in the back, that, in the very back in the alley, that is damaging the foundation, and it's like a, almost like a weed that's grown for 20, 30 years, and we're recommending that that be taken down. There's really no other landscaping now. I do wanted to say though, the owners have no intention of making this a bar, a restaurant, anything like that. You can't go up to this concession and order a drink on a daily basis. Okay? That's not, I know you may have heard that, you may have read that, that's not what the intent of this project is.
Speaking of the outdoor, I do have one more question, then I'm finished. And it's about the railing that's above the marquee. Can you describe that to us? I know you have it written here, it's number 14, horizontal pipe guardrail at balcony painted.
This is necessary to have a 42-inch-high guardrail. We didn't want to, we wanted to keep the mass of the marquee down to this height where it is now, and, but the balcony, when you stand there, you have that 42-inch-high guardrail. So we felt that a horizontal railing would be the most appropriate architecturally, you know, as that solution. And we're showing it as pipe railing for durability, and you see that quite a bit in Art Deco buildings.
So when you say pipe railing, you're talking about a round pipe that I might see in plumbing, or?
You also might see it in a lot of buildings all over the country. It's a very common type of railing.
And what color were you planning to, one of the colors of the building, I take it?
It was to be the colors of the building, to be monochromatic.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Erickson, you have a question, Mr. Kohlstad? Go ahead.
So that you can help us correctly, sorry, so you can help us correctly potentially modify the conditions of approval, would it be, your understanding, I'm trying to be sure I understand exactly how to modify what would be condition 5A to be consistent with your understanding, so that we can clarify that for all of us also? So if it were to read something to the effect, eliminate the neon LED tube lighting on the facade and adjacent to the knife plate sign, is that consistent with what your understanding of what the Historic Preservation Committee?
That sounds much more clear and concise and precise to me. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kohlstad, before I let you sit down, I want, just want to clarify something with staff. So I asked about whether or not we were simply looking at exterior modifications to the building, and I realize that maybe I'm not precise enough in my question. If we were to make a motion to approve the exterior modifications that we've talked about, are we incorporating the proposed interior modifications without actually examining them?
No.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Kohlstad? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just have one question on, further to Charles Erickson's question. Some of the questions tonight has been concerns about the intensity of lighting. And I have heard your answers to be essentially, we don't intend the lighting to be too intense. But obviously, that's a difficult question. And so a question was asked about being able to dim the lights, and you said you could do that with LEDs. Since one of the concerns here is simply that the lighting not be garish, I don't know how we could expand condition 5 to have some limitation on the light, so both you and the town could ultimately be satisfied with the lighting. So I guess I'm just asking you, what would your intention be as you put this lighting in and as you finish it, to see that the intensity is as you wish it to be, that is not too strong? Do you intend to do testing as you put it in, or after you put it in? Do you intend to dim it if necessary?
We often, I've done several, several projects that have high, high-end lighting, and we're often there at clients' homes throughout the night, because that's the only real way to adjust it and test it. And so we will definitely do testing. There's a lot of lighting right now that we can actually use as a guideline and to stay within that same limits. I don't know how you would put that into a condition.
Well, let me ask you this question then. If we were to suggest, if we were to condition it by saying that upon some period of time, within the completion of this exterior structure, which we're talking about, tests would be run to see that the intensity of the lighting was reasonably acceptable to the town staff. I'm not coming up with the words now, but it sounds like that should be acceptable to you. Now, I'm keen on the word reasonably, I don't know that that's the right word to use. But we're all kind of, to say it the wrong way, in the dark about the intensity of the lighting. And the only way you will know that is by doing things with it afterwards. And the only way we'll know what the intensity is, when you say to us, you know, I think this is right. And I would imagine at that point, we're probably all going to be happy, but we don't know tonight, and so one of the major concerns is this intensity thing. So would a condition of that nature, and that would be crafted by the commission, not by me personally, would that be acceptable to you?
That staff has the final say on the lighting, once it's in place?
Yes, yes. Now, I must, you know, the commission may say, bring it back to the commission. All I'm saying is somebody ought to be satisfied, as well as you, that your ultimate product is the way we're hearing it's going to be, i.e., not garish lighting on perhaps the most important street in town.
I'm not exactly sure how you would word that and how we would make that happen. I know that's our goal, and that's everybody's goal, so if we can work together to find an amicable solution.
Well, I guess we'll find out what the commission wants to do.
Thanks for the words, yes.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Tausfer.
One question as a follow-up. And are you working with a lighting designer?
Not at the moment, but I think we will. It's an important building.
We will, or you certainly will? You're looking for one. Make me feel better about this.
Well, a lighting consultant is a vague term. There's no-
Well, there are theater lighting consultants, though.
For interiors, that's correct. There are interior theater, theater specialist lighting consultants, and we will work with one of those, and we will work with an acoustic specialist, and we will work with the AV specialist. On the exterior, I have some very, very good lighting designers that we could work with, but I personally think that I'm as good as half of those lighting designers, and I'm not a lighting expert. That says something about the lighting industry.
Okay.
But-
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Kohlstad? I don't see any. So once again, I'm prepared to close the public hearing. And I don't see anybody coming forward, so the hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Kohlstad. And now I'm going to look to the commission for questions of staff first. Any questions for staff? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'm going to ask the same question by way of looking for suggestions from the staff. Does the staff have any thoughts on how the town, speaking collectively, can be satisfied with the ultimate lighting product? I had made a suggestion that some, after construction, something be done, but do you have any suggestions as to how that might be done?
Well, I heard two concerns with lighting. One was about the LED lighting and whether that could actually be provided. Suggestion on that is that we could condition it to state that in the event that LED lighting cannot be used, the applicant shall return with an alternative, and that could come back to the commission if that's the desire of the commission. We also could condition it to say tests shall be performed to ensure that the intensity of exterior lighting does not exceed the current levels of lighting, and we'll do an inspection prior to the final of the building.
Commissioner Tausfer. Other questions of staff? Okay, I don't see any, so now's the time to look to the commission for comments and/or a motion. Commissioner Erickson?
So I would agree and share the concerns of my commissioners about lighting, and that lighting is a key element to the building. And, but it seems to me that we've talked about the problems that, potential problems that lighting, exterior lighting could cause, and we haven't talked about the advantages that lighting, skillfully done, tastefully done, appropriately done, could contribute to making this a gem in the center of town. And I'm like Mr. Kohlstad, not a lighting expert, but it does seem to me that the balance is to enhance, the balance that we're trying to seek, is to enhance the exterior of the building and make it a prominent, inviting element on the street while not making it garish. And while certainly we'll only know that after it's done, and my sense is that some of that judgment will be in the eye of each individual beholder. So it's not clear to me how one would condition that. I would share Commissioner O'Donnell's pursuit of trying to figure out how to condition that. I don't see how one would do that effectively, because it would simply be in the eye of the beholder. My sense is the adjustments that was made to the exterior lighting as a follow-up to what the concerns expressed by the Historic Preservation Committee, at least in the eye of this beholder, the imaginary eye of this beholder, would cause it not to be garish and would contribute to it being a gem in the middle of town. I also share Commissioner Jensen's concern about the fact that we've split the consideration of this project effectively into the exterior, the interior, and a conditional use permit. Would have been ideal to have considered all of it as a single package. I think we're not doing that, so we should be careful about what we do and that what we approve for the outside doesn't either preclude or suggest something about those other two decisions. And it's, the applicants might want, might share that concern with us, so, but we are where we are tonight with that.
Other comments or a motion, Commissioner Tausfer?
I am also concerned about the CUP not coming with this, because really, all we're looking at and that we could approve tonight would be square footage, and yet- And yet, the CUP has such impact to a design of any building. And to not be able to do both at the same time is really handicapping us, in a way, when we want this to be a perfect project. Mike, I have a question of staff, if I may. Is there any way that we could recommend that this come back to us on December 12th with perhaps some more information about lighting? And then we could make a final approval at that time with the CUP? Is there something holding us back from doing that?
No, if that's the decision of the commission, that can certainly occur.
Okay, because I think that we might be able to have a few more answers. And if we have any other concerns, yes?
I was going to just point out that we, if possible, we will bring this to the commission prior to December 12th. We had a major item scheduled for November 14th that is not apparently going to be moving forward on that date. So if that's a potential date, or if a special meeting is scheduled, as is being discussed, for November 28th, we will bring this to the commission sooner. So I would prefer not to continue it to a specific date, but to say that we'll companion it with the CUP when that comes to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so maybe we need to hear from our, my fellow commissioners about that. I would be willing to make a motion in that regard. But let me hear from my fellow commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell, before I call on you, I'm going to see if somebody who hasn't spoken yet has a comment. And I don't see any, so I'll call on you.
I listened carefully to Commissioner Erickson, and I certainly agree with him. The problem, I guess I have, is it is in the best interest of the applicant to have good lighting, the gem-like quality. And therefore, that side will be well-represented, I would think. It is in the contrary, not contrary to that, but balanced with that will be that the townscape not be troubled by that. And that, of course, does get down to personal judgment. I don't think that's going to happen. But the suggestion made by Ms. Vila, that, her two suggestions, and really, the latter is the one that appeals to me. The only thing I would be concerned with is, once we see it, there've been a number of questions asked about specific lighting. Once we see it, the only thing I would be concerned about is if something just didn't turn out the way everybody assumes it's going to turn out. It would be nice if the town could say, dim that down. So I don't find that to be, I'm suggesting that that would not be an unreasonable approach. As far as the delay is concerned, if this were to be November 14th, that's a little more difficult to argue against than as it gets out. I'm very sympathetic with the desire of the applicant to get this done. I join Commissioner Tausford in enjoying going to this theater. The sooner it gets open, the happier I'm going to be. So I would be inclined to want to do this this evening, but to have the escape clause in it for the lighting. Because really, that's the only, only open question I can think of at the moment, considering how we've parsed this. And I'm not approving that parcel, parsing of it. But we've done that. So unless somebody wants to wait till the whole thing's ready to go, which I don't, I think we could do it this evening with that condition.
Okay, seeing no one else raising their hand, I am going to weigh in. I agree with Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner Tausford. As I, obviously, I said at the start, I think that these applications should not be bifurcated. I think the architecture actually does affect the use, and they should be considered together. I think the lighting, I think that the notice that goes out for the CUP is going to attract more people who are interested in this when they see what the CUP is, who may have some comments about the lighting as well. Commissioner O'Donnell pointed out that the applicant doesn't know what the lighting is going to be. We should know that. Another thing that we don't know is what the tile is going to look like. We should know that. So to me, there are questions that, if we're going to bring this back, there's absolutely no reason to not bring it back together with the CUP. So if Commissioner Tausford wanted to make that kind of motion, I would certainly support it. And I do agree with Commissioner O'Donnell that if it can come back in November, I actually don't see it as a particular impediment to the applicant versus six weeks out in December, three weeks on November 14th. Is, seems to me a reasonable compromise to put the matters together and to get the commission the information that it needs. That would be my comment. Other comments or questions of staff?
Would it be the chair's suggestion, if I understand what you said, that then, on whatever date it would be in November, we would also be considering the CUP?
Yes, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tausford.
Okay, I could go along with that. I would like to give the applicant more time than the 14th of November. I would prefer either the later date in November, if we can do that, or the fallback could be December 12th. There are a few other concerns I had, and I don't know if my fellow commissioners have any. But, and I guess it has to do with the LED posters in the windows. And, and I know it's the current thing, and it's today, and all of that, and I'm all about that, too. But just because this is the, in a historical area of our town, I'm wondering if the applicant and the owners might consider that if they have to put the LEDs out, if they wouldn't mind putting them so that they're not right adjacent to the sidewalk? If they have to be on the outside of the theater? Or they might consider putting them on the inside, where I see a lot of them in the current theaters today? When I've seen them on the, in the posters, windows, I've seen them in Los Angeles, you know, much larger cities where, you know, you would expect something like that. I'm just not sure that I want to lose our historic ambiance at that point. But I'd like you to consider that, and I'd like to hear from my other commissioners about that. Maybe I'm...
Well, do you want to try a motion, and then we'll see if we agree with you? The other thing you might consider is Ms. Avila's suggestion that rather than set a date, that once all the information is received and staff determines when this can be properly put on calendar, perhaps they can also work with the applicant to see which date would be appropriate, rather than give one date or the other.
Okay.
So if you want to try a motion, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Okay, so I would move that Architecture and Site Application S-12-023 at 41 North Santa Cruz Avenue, that is requesting approval of exterior modifications to an existing commercial building, be brought back and packaged with the CUP, and that the applicant work, or the staff work with the applicant so that once all the information is received, that it comes back to the Planning Commission at their, at everyone's earliest convenience.
Okay.
And with also noting that we would like to have, we're focusing on lighting, the tile, and was there something else?
The posters.
Oh, and the posters, right. The LED poster windows. And I think that's my motion.
Is there a second?
My motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just want to ask, so whether the poster issue, exterior poster, is a sign issue or not? Because we have a sign ordinance, and this is new to me, but now we're talking about electronic, essentially signing. Whereas in the past, we have had signs, and I don't know that that was covered by a sign ordinance either. So it's just a simple question. Would such a device be considered signing under our sign ordinance?
Staff will need to review the sign ordinance to, and bring that information back to the Planning Commission when this returns. The sign ordinance does not allow moving signs, so I'll, we may need to make an interpretation as to whether this qualifies as such.
Okay, Commissioner Tausford, do you want to add then a request in your motion for staff to bring back information regarding the application of the sign ordinance?
Please add into that, into that motion that the, yes.
Good enough.
Is that good enough? Thanks.
Good enough. Okay, is, I haven't asked for a second. Is there a second to the, is anyone going to second the motion? Commissioner O'Donnell. Comments or questions on the motion? Okay, the motion has been made by Commissioner Tausford to essentially continue this matter to a meeting when staff determines and the applicant determines that they can get the information that Planning Commission has requested regarding lighting, signage, and the tile, coupled with the CUP back before us. And I'm assuming that the intention is to have it at the earliest date. So that is the motion, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? None, it passes unanimously. So because this is a continuance, it's, it is not subject to appeal, correct?
That is correct, and we will be sending out new notices because the CUP has not been noticed. So we will re-notice this application instead of continuing it like is typical.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item number two.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
I actually did have my hand up, but you didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All I was going to recommend is, because this is such an exciting project, I'm just going to recommend in terms of the lighting, there have been some renovations to theaters. I'm thinking of the one in Redwood City, the Fox Theater, where perhaps when the applicant comes back to us, there could, there could be a, at least a visual for us. You can see what's happening. We're so visual with everything that maybe the lighting that you do select is something that you can come back, more concrete, and some kind of a picture of something that it would look similar to X, Y, Z. And that's all I wanted to recommend. Thank you.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you, and I'm sorry I missed your hand. So we'll encourage a visual when you return. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item number two, which is 135 Riviera Drive. And this is an Architecture and Site Approval for renovation to a 50-unit expansion of an existing parking complex? A parking apartment complex? Freudian slip. And the Planning Commission is, we have a Plan Development Ordinance, which is part of our packet, that's been approved by the Town Council. And I'm sure that staff or Ms. Prop will correct me if I'm wrong, but what the Planning Commission is authorized to decide tonight is the building design, the exterior colors and materials, the landscape design, the lighting fixtures, the trash enclosures, new fencing, not existing fencing, and the sign for the project. Am I correct that that's what we're looking at?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there anything to add to our staff report? And we do have the desk item.
Yes, the desk item is some conditions of approval that were inadvertently left out, recommended by engineering, and most of them are relating to stormwater runoff. If there's any questions about those conditions, the engineer is available to answer questions. I did also want to let the commission know, just for the record, that I spoke with a resident today, property owner at Sixth Brickway Court, and he is not at the meeting this evening. But he just expressed a concern about the parking lot lighting and making sure that it was not obtrusive to his property. And I got his contact information and have shared that with the applicant. And we will be working directly with that resident in placing the parking lot lights. They are downlit, down-directed lights, but we'll put them in a location where they do not have any spill over into the property that's adjacent.
Other questions for staff? Okay, I don't see any. I'm going to call on the applicant, who I'm assuming is Mr. Guthrie. And sir, you and any member of your team has a cumulative five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And while you're doing that, I'll just say it's eight to one Giants at the top of the ninth.
Members of the Planning Commission, I'm Jim Guthrie. I'm the project architect. And we have brought a visual presentation of the changes that we've made to the project since the last Planning Commission hearing. And I want to say that we appreciated at that hearing when our project was approved, the suggestions that were made to improve the relationship between the new building architecture and the existing building architecture. And since that time, we've worked closely with staff and with Larry Cannon, who's the town's architectural consultant. And he made some very good suggestions, and we've incorporated those suggestions that he made to better relate the buildings together. So the first slide is just an orientation, aerial rendering to show the relationship between the existing and the old, I mean, the existing and the new. There it is. The next slide is photos of the existing buildings primarily showing those faces that face the new buildings and the character of the existing project, just to orient you. Next slide. This slide and the next few slides are direct comparison between the new and the old on the same facades of the new buildings. We have currently proposed at the top and previously submitted at the bottom. And suggestions that Larry made were primarily that where we were accentuating the unit stacks and the stepping of the buildings, he felt that in relating to the existing buildings, this was just too busy. That he called it the staccato effect. And so we'd have to say that, we have to agree with him. So what he suggested is, instead of announcing each group of units, that we start to combine them together into more of a block and a horizontal look to simplify the massing of the new buildings. He also suggested that we keep the parapets at the same height to play down that stepping, to give more of a horizontality to the new buildings, more similar to the existing. The other thing that he felt strongly about was the storage closets that we show here were a long extension out away from the building, and he felt that they were just too bold. So we were able to redesign the storage closets and push the first floor back two and a half feet, push the second floor back five feet, and then add sloping metal roofs to soften the overall effect of the storage closets. The other thing that he suggested was the central stair wall, he felt was too long. It projected down, mostly halfway down the stairs, and he felt that that was just another appendage that wasn't necessary. So he asked us to pull it back, which we have done here. Another item that he mentioned was, he liked the storefront windows that we have in a leasing office, and asked us to add more grids to the first-floor living room windows to more mimic the look of a leasing office. He also said that he felt that the color scheme that we were using with four accent colors that were appearing on each building was not really necessary, that there was enough going on with the architecture that if we simplified the color scheme, that it would, it would work. And given the fact that the existing buildings are so very plain, there's not that much opportunity to put many, many colors on the existing buildings. So we've also done that. Going to the next slide, this is the rear of building number one. And once again, proposed and existing, same changes that I talked about on the first slide apply to this one. The next slide. This is building four, old and new. And we're showing building four just to show this is the second accent color that we're using. We're using one color on building one, and the same color on building three, and then the other color on building two and on building four. Next slide. Oh. Showing the rendering here, we did not do this view when we originally submitted the project. So this existing view already shows the incorporation of the block massing, the aligned parapets. It shows awnings that were added over the windows. It shows the stair wall pulled back. But the dramatic thing that it does show is this is the old storage cabinet as it exists. This is the new storage cabinet, which is much more softened, much less obtrusive than what we had before. The other thing it shows that I didn't mention, Larry also felt very strongly that the entries to the first-floor units were not pronounced, that they were rather hidden. So he asked us to do something to announce those entries and make them look special. So we've added a plaster, pilaster with a stone cap, and it has a lighted address for each unit. And then we have a steel trellis over the top of it, which really says, this is the entrance to the unit.
So your time's up, but you can finish your presentation because I know we're interested.
Okay. This next slide shows a enlarged, enlarged portion of the existing buildings. And I know with the glare of the overhead lights, it's a little bit difficult to see the color rendition, but we're using the same colors on the existing building that we're using on the new buildings, and the accent color... and the accent colors we're picking up in the spine walls of the balconies over here and over here. And then we've also added window awnings that I neglected to mention on the new buildings and the old buildings to tie the two together once again with a common element. This is our material board, this indicates the awning that's going to be at the leasing and fitness, this is the window trellis that we've added to various windows, there's a third-floor balcony in the new buildings, and this is representative of what it looks like. Vinyl windows, this gives the character of the balcony railings on the new and old buildings, which will be identical. The leasing and fitness storefronts, standing seam metal roofs, stone cap on the plaster pilaster at the first-floor entries, and the plaster siding for the building. And now we go to landscape.
And sir, would you introduce yourself to us please?
I would. Good evening, council members. My name is Morgan Burke, I'm an associate landscape architect with the Guzzardo Partnership, where the project landscape architect, Paul Leterry is with me as well, he's the principal of the Guzzardo Partnership. Thanks for giving us the extra time to describe the landscape. As you can see, the slide here is a view of the overall project site, lightly colored buildings, lightly colored buildings are, I've got a pointer, Paul, are buildings five, six, and seven, the existing buildings, building one, two, three, and four, the new proposed buildings. This slide, just to give you a sense of the overall context of the site. Moving on, the staff recommendations, when we were working with staff, was, one of the recommendations was to open up the entry to the private units and to create a little bit more green space. This is what we had originally proposed. As you can see, the fence is detached from the flatwork here and creates this segregated landscape area to the unit entries. Go to the next slide. This is what we've done to create some more green space in front of the unit entries, as you can see here, as Jim alluded to, this is the pilaster at the front of the unit entry. Now we've tied the patio fence to the flatwork to get rid of that separation and create a larger green space, and that'll happen throughout the site. Go to the next slide, please. This slide shows the ladder pad conditions, and it's just a slide to describe if we had any questions about why the paving design is the way that it is, is because we need to have some space to ladder up to the other stories. Moving ahead. This slide shows the original layout for the parking at the southeast portion of the site, and shows that we were budding up against the Los Gatos Creek, that it's adjacent in the property line. Go to the next slide, please. And this shows the reworking of the parking to pull off the property line and move away from Los Gatos Creek. Also, we redesigned the parking to create some more room for the existing oak tree that's going to remain. Go to the next slide. This slide is showing you the western portion of the site and where most of the action takes place as far as the new building and new construction. We can see the new pool area, which is centered in the site. It's around the reworking of the circulations that we've done through the site to create more accessible pathways throughout the site. The pool has been shifted slightly to the east in this iteration, and that creates a more centered location for it. It's easily accessible from all the buildings on the site. It also allows us to move it closer to the restrooms that are located in the fitness center here. Next slide, please. And this slide is showing the eastern portion of the site, it's mainly existing conditions. We have bioswirl treatment in this location, we also have it in other locations on the site to do the stormwater treatment. Also, we are going to create a new signage element off of Rushmore Lane here to create a sense of entry at that entrance, and we're going to apply it to the existing retaining wall, if you go to the next slide, please. This is what we're proposing for the new signage element. As you can see, there's an existing retaining wall in the back, and that hanging plant, the rosemary, is currently there, and our idea would be to have these corten steel frames held off the face of the retaining wall to allow the rosemary to grow behind it, we would attach the signage to those frames. Next slide, please. Final slide here is showing some of the characters and landscape features that we have proposed for the site. In particular, if you look up to the upper-left here, the lighting that we've selected, this is the pole light, pedestrian-scale pole light that'll be running throughout the interior courtyard of the site, interior aspects of the site, and then it has a bollard component that will be matching it. And then the light, the furthest to the left, there is the parking lot fixture that would be used throughout the parking lot. I just wanted to make a note that the lighting will be shielded and directed, so if it's in front of a unit and it's a pole light, it'll be directed away from the windows, and we'll be using bollards in locations where, close to units, just to minimize light impact in those situations. The final aspect that I want to make a point here is the metal fence. The only new fencing that we're proposing on the site is around the pool area, and it would be a simple metal picket fence that would surround the pool area, much like the character shown in the picture there. Just to touch on to the planting, if I may, at the bottom here, this is kind of the character for some of the biofiltration planting that we're going to do on-site, and in addition to that, you know, the planting on-site will be of a drought-tolerant nature, and we will introduce as many California-native planting and planting that's accommodated to our climate as much as possible to the project. Questions?
Okay, let's see if there's questions for either you or for Mr. Guthrie. Any questions? Commissioner Seauk.
Thank you for your presentation, that was pretty well detailed. I'm looking at, I was looking again, I looked through it, but your lighting for the parking area, I'm trying to, I guess, northeast, that's adjacent to the creek trail. Are you also going to be using the bollard so that it prevents the shining away from the trail?
Oh, we're talking about in this area here?
Correct.
We would be using the large-scale streetlight in those locations to light the parking lot, but we would have that light to be shielded and directed away towards the creek, and so that it would only, it would be directed towards the parking itself.
Okay, and there's no any other lighting that you're proposing along those fence lines?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for either architect? Commissioner, tell us where.
Right, it's for the architect. I'm curious as to why the Hardy panel grid siding was totally eliminated and replaced with the stucco siding.
It was eliminated because it's no longer available. They discontinued it. So once they did that, we said, let's make everything plaster, because the new, or the old buildings are all plaster, and so let's just make everything the same.
Okay, the reason is because the Hardy panel added some detail to these rather plain facades. Was there any other way that you could have added some articulation or detail to these very plain walls?
You can do that with plaster joints.
And will you be doing that?
Yes, we will.
Can you show me what that means?
Okay, let's see. The first elevation, yeah, that's good. Yep, yeah. For example, where we have these windows here, typically control joints are put on the edges of windows, so we would be taking two control joints down the edge of there, two control joints here, taking two across the top, and we can add others to mimic that look of the Hardy panel.
That's previously submitted, so where would it be up there?
Well, it's because I'm vertically challenged, I'm sorry.
Oh. Now, now, I never thought that. Okay.
There's a little red laser light. If you want to use that. It's fun, too, so.
Same idea up here.
Okay, is there a detail of that in here?
Not really, I mean, if you look closely at some of the drawings, you can see it, but it's rather...
But it's on the plans, okay.
It's on the plans.
All right, and then I guess my other question is, will, when these other existing apartments are converted, you know, they're talking about 24 existing apartments to be converted to affordable units?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Will there be changes to those apartments at all on the outside? You know, materials, creating the windows?
Not, in addition to what I've already discussed with the color schemes and the awnings over the windows, that's primarily what is going to be done.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Seauk.
This is another question with regards to lighting. Staff had mentioned that a neighbor who could not attend tonight was concerned about the parking adjacent to Brickway Court. Could you just talk about, is that lighting going to be any separate, any different than the lighting that you have within the premises?
I believe, Suzanne can speak to this, the lighting question is right here in this corner, and it would be the similar situation to what we're doing on the Los Gatos Creek side, where it would be directed away from his unit.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, other questions? Yeah, actually, I have a question from Mr. Guthrie, and if you could put back the picture you were using for Commissioner Talswar? That one, no, that one, yeah. Whoops, sorry, there you go. I actually don't normally do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. I actually personally like the bottom better, so I would like an architect to explain to me why the bottoms, why the top is better than the bottom. I like the articulation, I like that it looks different, the one at the top looks like a, I'm not going to say what it looks like to me, but it looks like a block. So can you explain to me as an architect why I should prefer, other than that Mr. Cannon said I should prefer it, but why should I prefer the top one to the bottom one?
You should prefer the top one to the bottom one as far as relating to the existing buildings. I prefer this as well. And it was a little bit, had to swallow a little bit to go with his suggestions, but I have to admit that this is more simple, and it looks more in keeping with the existing buildings. If this was a new project all on its own, I would definitely prefer this.
Okay, that explains it. Other questions? Commissioner Smith.
I lost my page, but in a previous hearing, we talked about the equivalent of a totlot and, or a small little play area, and, is it there? I just lost my page for the big, yes, so I don't see it, I don't see the green space for the children.
Well, there's not a dedicated totlot per se on the site. There are large areas of green space that can be used for free-programmed activity, such as this area here, we've got an existing kinko tree that's going to be remained, and there's a large green area that can be, you know, planted in such a way that we can, you know, use it for free programming. It's not going to have a play structure, but can be open for that kind of use. I think most of the other site, the other, it's challenging on the site, too, there's a lot of grade change over the site, and most of the areas that are open here are regulated to stormwater treatment, such as we have here and here, and I believe there's another area over here that we're using to stormwater mitigate.
So if I could just go back to where you showed me before, so are you, you're open then to make those modifications so that we have a play area, but I understand there won't be a play structure? No?
We're open to keeping it, you know, an open, free-use green space.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talswar, you had your hand up?
I did, and it was really for the architect to address the staircases leading up to the buildings. Is that, there are no elevators in these buildings, is that correct?
Correct. There are no elevators.
So up and down is strictly by the stairs?
Right, and the upper units are townhome units with a stairway within the unit, so there's only one flight of stairs up to the second floor.
Okay, thanks.
And Commissioner Seauk, I think you had your hand up.
Actually, I have two now. The first, well, with projects this large, there are no ADA requirements, or do they look at it holistically with the existing buildings?
There are definitely ADA requirements on the new buildings on the first floor, and to the fitness and leasing spaces and throughout the site, but with the existing buildings, they're grandfathered in, they're so old that it would be in hardship to try and bring them up to standards.
Okay, and then the second one, this is a piggyback to Commissioner Smith's question. I see two pools on the plan, is one a kid pool, or is that more of a hot tub?
Yes, it's a spa.
Okay, okay, that was it. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have one other card, Melissa Darnell.
Good evening, can you guys hear me? Good evening, commissioners and staff. I am a resident here, I first want to introduce myself. I've been in, living in Los Gatos for close to 10 years, approaching our 10 years, and my name's Melissa Darnell. I want to also let you know what I do for a living. I am a commercial project manager for CBRE, so I wholly support renovations and improvements and developments, otherwise I wouldn't have a job. So I have looked through the, and I'm not sure if this is the right time or not, but I have looked through the current recommended conditions for approval, and it does look like staff and council have done a lot to make sure we have a lot of mitigation factors included and addressed, like the cultural resources, biological erosion, dust, all of those. They've even addressed noise mitigation. However, being a resident in the area, I'd like to discuss that a little bit further. Right now, it's looking at the hours of operations for construction are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. weekends, as well as holidays. I'd like to kind of point out that not all occupants in the area have standard eight-to-five job schedules. Some of us work swing shifts, some of us work from home, some of us, you know, work second shift, whatever, some of us change throughout the time. And I'd kind of like to ask that we reconsider that hours of operation at some point throughout this process, whether it's now or...
Okay, let me just address your comments. Sadly, we cannot address that, because it may be appropriate at some time for it to be revisited if it comes about that there's some violation of the conditions or there's some other issue that you bring to the town council, but what we have is a, the conditions you're looking at are part of a Plan Development Ordinance that's already been passed by the town council, so the only way to reexamine that, we can't do that here. We can only, we're only talking about architecture tonight.
I wasn't...
So it would be, it would be, what I would say to you is, monitor it, and if you have a concern or an issue, you should bring it to the attention of the appropriate person.
I think my point, and maybe, I don't know if we can, is that it's currently proposed seven days a week throughout the entire process, and that's really...
Yeah, I understand your concern, but unfortunately, we can't address it for you. We'd like to, but we can't.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Guthrie, or, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, and if you could fill out one of these cards so that I won't forget it next time. Is there anything else that you want to add to your presentation? You have that opportunity, you don't have to take it.
Please.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, clink, and before I look to the commission for discussion or motion, I'm just going to say final score, eight to three So, and how they get the three, I don't know. So commissioners, discussion comments, questions of staff and/or a motion? Commissioner Erickson.
I will move approval of architectural insight application S-12071, which is for the renovation expansion of an existing apartment complex, specifically the final building design, the exterior materials and colors, the landscape plan, the exterior outside lighting, and the trash enclosure fencing as was presented. I can make the following findings in association with that, that a mitigated negative declaration was... was prepared in conjunction with the plan development, and that the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring plan, which were approved by the council in conjunction with the PD, are sufficient and there are no further environmental analysis required. The project, as, the details of the project as presented are in conformance with the plan development ordinance adopted by the council, association with the project, and the considerations for reviewing an architectural site application have been made in reviewing this project.
Commissioner Erickson, did you want to include the new conditions in the desk item?
Sorry, yeah. Including, sorry about that, including the ones that were included with the desk item. Apologize.
Thanks. Is there a second? Commissioner Seauk?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made for approval by Commissioner Erickson, seconded by Commissioner Seauk. Any comments or questions regarding the motion? Commissioner Smith, I see your hand this time.
I wonder if we can add that, I'd like to add that condition for that green space because we are going to have families living in that community, and the children do need someplace that's not ground, stormwater drainage area.
Okay, is that agreeable to the maker of the motion to include that?
It's not clear to me what we're changing from the plans as presented.
There is a site to the right of the swimming pool that now has, yes, right there, that can be made into a green space where the ground covering would be different than the ground covering that is in other spots. Am I correct? I believe I'm correct. In other words, it would just be a green space with lawn on it, rather than trees and then the ground covering that's there now? Or proposed?
I don't know what you're saying.
It is staying, the cypress tree is staying?
What I understood the applicant to be saying is that they were happy to keep that open for multiple uses, although they wouldn't put a play structure on it.
Yes, that's correct. No play structure, but it would be open.
Right.
Okay.
Is that sufficient clarification for you, Commissioner Erickson?
Sure. My review of the plans say, it would indicate to me that it's open now, but, so I'm not sure what we're changing, is I guess what I'm saying. But if it helps get the motion through, and if it needs to be open and it already is open, I suppose it doesn't matter.
I think for me, it was the question of the, it looked like the ground covering was going to be something that had to do, that wasn't just going to be lawn, but you can correct me on that. Maybe I'm...
Okay, let me reopen the public hearing for the express purpose of getting the answer to that question. Mr. Burke?
Yes, we can choose planting in that area that will be, you know, turf or low ground cover, something that will make it accessible, you know, for, you know, free programmed use.
Well, no. Thank you. Okay, so I think that the negative reaction you're getting is what's free programmed use?
Well, I'm just, it's just an open green space, is all I'm trying to say.
Okay, thanks. So I'm going to close the public hearing again. And Commissioner Erickson is, or Commissioner, I should really ask Commissioner Smith, are you satisfied that now? Do you have any further questions or requests of Commissioner Erickson?
No. As long as I'm getting grass. Okay.
You're getting grass or reasonable facsimile, as I understand it? That's available for playing?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Talsfor?
No, that was it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, the motion's been made for approval by Commissioner Erickson, seconded by Commissioner Seauk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Is this subject to appeal? Because it's the final decision of the planning commission, or it is not?
Yes, this is appealable. There is a 10-day appeal period, and anyone that's dissatisfied with the planning commission's decision can file an appeal. Appeals need to be made in the town clerk's office, and there is a fee and a form needs to be completed.
Okay. We have no continued other business. We have no new business. Report from the planning director?
Thank you. I do have two brief items. First, I did want to remind the planning commission, you've probably heard, that our sports park will, the grand opening for the sports park will be this Saturday from 10 to 12. Also, at the council meeting on October 15th, the planning commission was there for the beginning of the meeting, and at the end of the meeting, near the end of the meeting, the town council considered the sustainability plan. They did make a number of changes, and I just wanted to go ahead and, if you could pass those down. This actually indicates all the changes they made, so that you have a copy of that. There were a number of changes that they made, so I just want you to have a copy of that. And that's all we have for you tonight.
Okay, commission matters? I'm just going to say congratulations to Commissioner Erickson, who was reappointed to another four-year term on the commission. Congratulations, Commissioner Erickson. And I think that concludes our business. I'm going to close the meeting.